I'll call the, sorry, now being 5:30, I'll call the May 6th meeting of the Plymouth Board of Selectment Order. First item on our agenda is we've got representatives from Plymouth County here to talk to us about the ARPA program and present us with a check. So I'll turn things over to you, Tom.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We are thrilled to be back in Plymouth. This will, is not our first time, it won't be our last. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Valenzola, our Chair, to do a little bit of introduction, some commentary. I'll wrap it up. And then if it's okay, we'd like to do a picture. We brought one of the big checks. I do want it for the record, we've already turned over the actual checks to you. But we want everyone to know that Plymouth is receiving $89,403.40 through the Plymouth County ARPA program. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Valenzola to talk about what that means.
Sure.
Thank you, Treasurer, Madam Chair, and the membership, and those at home. It's always a pleasure to be in Plymouth. And the Treasurer is kind when he says he's going to add commentary. It's usually whatever I forget to say. So my goal sometimes is not to forget to say anything, but then again, I need to leave him with some stuff to say. So we do want to, I do just want to send the regrets of my colleagues, Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Hanley, they cannot be here this evening. But we've been, we've been ecstatic to partner with the town of Plymouth to be able to not only do the ARPA, but also CARES. The programs that we've been able to run, both of these federal grants, would not be successful without you folks, without your team here in Plymouth Town Hall, without Grajade, and without the entire Board of Selectmen. The success of these programs really does depend on that collaboration and working together. The Treasurer's Office, he's very modest, does an incredible amount of work himself, his special assistant. And one of the value adds that we believe we bring to the program and bring to the county is having us as a resource to be able to execute these funds and use them for their highest and best use, which HVAC improvements is certainly one of those excellent uses. One-time expenditures to go towards improving your current infrastructure and doing preventative maintenance, which is going to save you in the long run as a community. As the Treasurer said, this is on our first time, certainly won't be our last. We do enjoy our visits here. Do want to acknowledge Senator Moran and Representative Lenatra, who have both been staunch advocates for the town of Plymouth in receiving these funds. I think the Treasurer will echo the sentiments there constantly for him and I, making sure that Plymouth is receiving their fair share. And I think that's the advantage of having Plymouth County doing these programs. We ran some comp sheets for the CARES Act. And not to put down our friends at the state, but it's a big state, and they have a lot of demands that they need to answer to, especially in the major cities. And had the state done CARES and had the state done ARPA, smaller communities such as Plymouth frankly would have been left behind. And we were glad that we were able to execute these funds and distribute them at less than 1% administration cost, which is right now the lowest average cost to administer in the nation. Receive national recognition for that for CARES. Hopefully, we're on track to receive national recognition for ARPA. And we deliver them quicker, and we delivered you more funds. So we're happy to keep that partnership going. And again, it's a privilege to be here. And I'm not sure what I forgot or left for Treasurer O'Brien, but I am confident he will be able to save the wars.
You didn't forget much at all, Chair. A few tidbits, but I'll try and weave them into the narrative. You covered all the basic points. We certainly appreciate the federal government recognizing the value add of Plymouth County, our partners Congressman Gieding, our two U.S. Senators, Marky and Warren, recognized in this language that we were the appropriate entity to receive these funds and administer them for our 27 communities. The Chair was good enough to mention our local legislative delegation. They have been hugely supportive of this effort. As others sometimes were wondering how this would be managed and would the communities get enough money, I know that Representative Lenatra, Senator Moran stood up and said yes. And by the way, Plymouth County is going to do a bang-up job, make sure that communities get their money where they need it and how they need it. And then you folks know firsthand, because you're on the front lines, you get hit with a barrage of requests all the time, particularly after the pandemic. Many of them, things that haven't been addressed for a while. You're not sure where those resources are going to come. These monies were for two separate projects. The first is the Chair, as Chairman Valenzola mentioned, was for an HVAC project at Silver Lake. So you have a portion of that. How were you going to come up with those funds? This is a perfect use of those resources. Provide clean air for our students. You folks were great with the application through Liz Dennehy and others that participated, your two chiefs, your police chief and your fire chief. And so we were thrilled to approve that. And then your second one, you had some well-monitoring that needed to be done, treats that needed to be cleared. Where are those resources going to come? And you've got other obligations. You've got public safety, you've got schools. How are we going to take care of these projects? Submit to ARPA. And you did. We approved the projects. Your submissions have been fantastic. So again, credit to your team. And please make sure when you get a chance, thank them for all their work, because we've made it fairly easy to submit, but it still takes some time to make sure you have all the documentation. You've got to check off all the right boxes. As I mentioned, there's still some money left. Plymouth has some applications in the process. We'll continue to work with your team to make sure. Because the one charge the Commissioners gave me as a Treasurer is no money is being returned to the U.S. Treasury, not a penny. And I was very pleased that under CARES, we were the first organization in the U.S. of the United States to spend every penny, and we didn't have to return a single cent back to the U.S. Treasury. ARPA is a bigger challenge, but we're on track to do that with our partners in our 27 communities. So we'll make sure the money that's allocated for Plymouth gets to Plymouth to do these projects that you need done. So we value that partnership. We look forward to continuing to working with you. We thoroughly enjoy coming to Plymouth. I mentioned how gracious you are whenever we come. You roll out the red flag. My favorite story is during CARES, we had a very busy day one July. This was the latter stop in the day. You were the only town that thought to provide us with some water, which was greatly appreciated. I think my Commissioners were about to mutiny against the Treasurer. And so it's just a great partnership we have. We love coming here and thrilled to be here this evening. So thank you. I don't know if there's anything you want to add. We are hoping to do a quick photo with you so that we can prove we delivered money to Plymouth.
Well, I think we all appreciate the money. It makes such a difference when funds are so tight and we have important projects to do, to be able to work with you guys, so that you're able to fund important things at the Denit and in other places that there's a need, but we may not have been able to fill it without your assistance. So thank you. We appreciate it.
I think, I wish Elizabeth Dennehy could have been here, because I know how closely she works with you. I think one of the reasons we're in this position is because we've got Liz. She's an excellent town administrator. But thank you. We really appreciate this.
Yeah, I would echo that sentiment. She stays on top of it, and we enjoy working with her, too.
Good.
Did you have anything you want to add?
Sort of echo all of that. We're a little tiny town, and boy, we appreciate working with you guys and the help you give us, and you make it easy.
That you do. With managing the funds and all the reporting that's required, you make it easy for us, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. I know the Chair mentioned that. It is an administrative challenge, and so our resources are dedicated. So you guys don't have to worry about that with these funds. So we can, if you, are we allowed to come up behind it?
Absolutely.
What protocol is?
Sure.
If we get permission from the Board? And we'll take a quick photo.
Did we bring water tonight?
I think we got the bubbler.
If you want water, we'll get you some.
No, we're good.
For your road trip to Dexbury?
Yes.
How do you want this?
This is going to be perfect if we can have Chair.
Why don't we move this chair?
Oh, that's a good idea.
So that we can...
The Chief doesn't want to come up and join us?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's like having law enforcement in our pictures.
One on either side.
Exactly.
That is very true.
This is great. I mean, the check cover is like everything.
Right, yes.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you. Can we keep the check?
You have the real ones.
Okay.
We are very, right, we're very economical.
Yes. Can you? Oh, that's awesome. You guys are super. Well, thank you guys.
Our pleasure. Thank you. I would very much. I'll catch up. It's been crazy. We'll catch up. I definitely want to do it. I'll do my best to be entertaining. Pick the topic and we'll go.
Liz, write this for me.
Are we?
All right, we'll talk soon.
All right. So next item on our agenda is appointing Matthew Hickey, a special police officer, from May 6th until of '24 to June 30th, '25. Do we have a question slip for Henry? Okay. Any questions? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion. We appoint Matthew Hickey as a special police officer effective May 6, 2024 until 6:30, 2025.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have to get a pen. I have a pencil. All right. Thank you. Can I borrow your pen?
Oh, hold on. I don't think that's a pen. Try that one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, all right. So next, we have got Chief Ball and Lieutenant Hoffman here to talk to us about a couple of different matters. First, the traffic safety campaign update, and then we'll get a general update on the police department. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Good evening, Select Board.
Good evening.
Just an update. For April was distracted driving month. I had the officers handing out flyers for hands-free, informational packet on the back. We had 303 motor vehicle stops with 108 of them being for hands-free using cell phones. May is click it or ticket. Funds are a little bit low now since we had a lot of, everybody's been taking part of the grant. They like being out there. So they're using the time. That additional officer's been very helpful. We do have a radar sign that is going to be going up on Center Street. Highway Department has that. The emails have been a success. People email me with any traffic concerns. Usually they involve their telephone number. I call them directly and ask, what do they need? If we can use the driveway? What time is it? You know? And that's been a success. And they've called back to appreciate, you know, say thank you for that.
That's great.
We also have our bicycle helmets in. The plan right now is for the Bike to School event. We're going to try to see who needs helmets, new sizes, or doesn't have any, and stop them there to give away some of these bike helmets to the kids that need them.
Do you have a date for that, then?
Right now, it's scheduled for June 7.
That's the Ride to Bike to School?
Great. Sounds like you've got a lot of good things happening.
Look forward to the Bike to School and the Memorial Day break.
Do you feel like we've put any dent in the speeding problem?
We do. It's just always that same phase of, once you're gone for a week or two of that impact area, they start going back with the routine. So you just find yourself jumping around from street to street to street, shutting it down, and then trying to get back there. But it's just less and less easy. You've got to go over to West Street. And usually I have someone, there might be an email that's backed up where I know Spring Street's the next street, because we already had a plan over there. So then after a week, I send them over to Spring Street. If there's no emails coming in, sometimes I'll have them sit on that one street for two weeks. But at every shift, they're going out and in that area.
Are they predominantly in town or out of town?
Out of town.
Out of town, yeah.
So we're writing tickets for those people? I mean, that's a pretty big deterrent.
It's both. A lot of them are money tickets, then there's the written warnings and the variable warnings. I mean, I could sit on the intersection up here, and almost every other car seems to be on the phone. So you can pretty much write money tickets to everyone. A lot of it just wants to be informative. They'll be like, you're not to be on your phone. You are going to be stopped. You are going to be warned. And now that will show when we run them again for that stop, it'll show that previously been stopped for that. And that's when the money citation usually comes in play.
And that's the same for speeding generally?
What's that?
Sort of a notation of a warning, and then next time?
Yes, yes, it is.
Something more substantial.
The one we're doing now, click it or ticket, not having a seatbelt on is not the primary offense for us to be stopped. And usually that's a secondary offense. So you get stopped for speeding, you notice the seatbelt's off, and you can write them for the seatbelt being off. But we're not to stop vehicles for that. Only primary offense of not having a seatbelt on.
It's hard to tell anyways, I would think.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes they're so quick when they stop, reach over to the glove compartment, that they kick it off. You'd have to observe it, you know? And if you didn't observe it, you couldn't tell if they took it off right away and they're saying it, then, you know, it's their work. So.
It's surprising that people still don't wear seatbelts. Interesting.
It is.
All the data out there.
You can lead them, but you can't make them drink.
No, no, yeah.
Exactly.
It's funny to kind of echo what Lieutenant said. You know, realistically, it's, you know, I look at the numbers every single month, just like Lieutenant Hoffman does when we do our grants and medals. Like, the percentage of out of town is actually like 80%. So it's actually very high as opposed to in-town, you know, traffic stops. Because I think, quite honestly, I think, Mr. Russo, your question, I think people locally are informed, because I still, case in point, I was just at a facility today. We're looking at some different equipment that's going to be donated to my department. And I walk in there, you know, and they talk about Plymouth. And it's still that mantra, what we always would talk about. And again, you guys, growing up in this town, you guys knew kind of what it was. I heard about it when I came here in 2015. And, but I think we, institutionally, like within the community, I think people still feel that we have a heavy presence in realistically adding on the additional resources with the grant. I mean, the traffic stops are through the roof percentage-wise. So I think the townspeople see it, and then the people that are cutting through, it's a cut-through community, right? They also start to feel the effects of it as well. I really truly think that. So, but the numbers to Lieutenant Hoffman's point, we were afforded a grant that was, you know, X amount of dollars, I think it's $40,000 for overtime opportunities. And the amount that we've been out there enforcing traffic will realistically, we're going to run out until June, you know, with July, August. So it goes to show how much we've been out there with enforcement. And not every one of them is a money ticket. You know, some of them could be the, you know, hey, just so you know, you know, handheld device, you know, it's, I want you to be aware of it. But the percentages are extremely high. So I give a lot of credit. We have a lot of new people, a lot of new faces. I'll kind of touch upon that, you know, when we get on to State of the Union type address. But we've been very active with.
I haven't heard anybody complain about the police being too active. Not one.
No, I haven't either.
Great. Good.
We can post that out there to let them know, this is coming.
So slow down.
So as soon as you get pulled over, you have the, that's on you, you know?
Have you had the repeat offender with the phone? So where you've given the?
I'm sure if you, you know, I'm sure you could. And if it hasn't happened yet, that it could.
It just shocks me.
Like everything else.
It's like so clear, like down, the seat is down.
What am I doing? You know, and you're like, I'm going to veer off the road. And then a week goes by, and old habits kind of come back.
When you see it all the time, you're driving behind somebody, it's like, oh my gosh, we're down the phone.
You don't even have to see them. They weave.
Yeah, they're just weaving.
They weave, and you know.
Hit the car, and then they're backing.
We had it happen today, to be candid. You know, an officer made the traffic stop while I was coming back from that facility over Nettleboro, and backed him up. And that's what, that's what the precursor to the stop was. That's what initiated the stop, is the fact of the person on the phone all over the road. So.
Get a lot more admission of guilt when you come up on the driver, who's smiling, sitting, I know, I know, I know. When we are speeding, usually they'll try to argue, you know, I wasn't going that fast. Put the cellphone, and they're just like, you got me. Straight in front of my hand, you know, you saw it. So.
Well, great job. Well done.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, how about Police Department General Update?
So, General Update, Police Department. To kind of re-echo what Lieutenant said, very busy with traffic. Obviously, end-of-year budget stuff's been really cumbersome. I'm trying to get all the numbers aligned. I give Liz time to credit for kind of helping walk through that a little bit towards the end here with budgets and finances and things like that. So we're still growing. We have a lot of interest within the department, new opportunities for my troops over there. We've opened up different opportunities through SMLAC, Southeastern Mass Law Enforcement Council. So getting them acclimated into these different specialized units, which really, you know, I know we've all kind of talked at different times, but I think we're really combating attrition. And that was one of the biggest things that I really wanted to kind of stress in the conversation with everybody, is that, you know, when I first came here, it seemed to be an revolving door. And us getting involved in a lot of different things that we do now, it's why we've had a lot of people come in my door, why I've had a lot of people stay. And I give the Board a ton of credit, too, as far as even contract-wise. These offices are happy here. They're getting opportunities that they didn't have in other places. So the State of the Union, I think, overall, we're really growing, but we have the right people in place now. And that means a lot to me, and it's the support of the Board, to be completely honest with you. So we are doing two new promotions. I know we'll speak about that at some point tonight. Nate Calente coming in administratively to kind of help out as a sergeant with the process and kind of, you know, work with me on a lot of these different growth avenues that we have within the department, and kind of delegate the positions a little bit differently. And Kevin Brower, he's been acting as a sergeant for the last, oh God, four or five months or so. But that came to fruition, too, with a full-time opportunity for him. So him refocusing on patrol to kind of augment what Lieutenant Hoffman's doing with a lot of the traffic directives and things like that. So kind of putting the key players into place to kind of own certain processes supervisory, and getting supervisors on every shift, that's another big part of this as well. You know, along the days, we always joked about it, the single office shifts. We're finally away from that, which is great, and having supervision on every one of them. Because you want to talk about liability, it's a huge liability. So again, the affordability for me to be able to have that, it also, you know, for the town to have the comfortability that we have the staffing situation the way we want it to be where it currently stands right now. I can't thank you enough.
I think we appreciate everything you do. And then it seems that there's so much excitement over there and a lot of positive energy, and it's just been wonderful to see. And these aren't, these are seasoned people that are coming through your door now, wanting to work for you and the town of Plymouth. And it's really, it's exciting. It's not like these people are straight out of the academy. These people, some of them are, were officers in other communities. And they've come here to work for us, which is, it's pretty exciting to have such a solid team over there. So we appreciate what you guys are doing.
I mean, to go even a little further on that, I mean, it's not even really just officers coming through the door. I've had sergeants, detectives, so people of rank that have been, you know, in this business or, you know, in this, you know, field for a lot of number of years to really try to like augment what we need to here. So it's worked out well. We've really got some really great, you know, staff, men and women over there. And we're getting there.
I think we made a lot of progress. You know, the thing I get excited about is the community involvement.
Right.
I think in the past, I've been here a long time, and it didn't seem to be that community way back. Excuse me. So I'm very pleased that we're seeing that. And I think to the extent you can build on that, it just makes it better for everybody. And the fact that you team well with the fire department, I think is a huge, a huge step forward. That wasn't always the case.
No. You know, and this isn't, and I appreciate you saying it. You know, I always joked with people in regards to, you know, the team aspect here in Plymouth. And, you know, I care about Mike Sloss and the library detectives, Dewey Decimal System. I think you and I joked about it. I'm going to make sure that Curious George is the right category as opposed to, you know, where the Odyssey of the Iliad is. You know, I care because it's Team Plymouth. And I like to echo that from, from the lowest subordinate, I hate to use that word, from the lowest patrolman to you name whatever office throughout this community, I care about that team aspect. So I think we have a really good foundation. We really truly do. And I don't want to keep saying it, but, you know, it's a credit to the Board, quite honestly, for allowing us to kind of bring that. The community stuff, that's always a low-hanging fruit for me. That's the easy stuff for us to do that we never hit home on. And it's not, you know, it's stuff that I wish we could have done sooner, but we're there now. Now we have kind of like buckets of when we know we're executing certain events, what's coming up annually, you know? That town engagement is paramount for me. I love that stuff. I absolutely love that stuff. So, and we do it really, really well.
And I don't hear a thing back negative, which is, you know, sometimes the best.
It wasn't a strong case, yeah.
But, no, and, you know, just the fact that, like the Speaker's program, there's a police officer comes. If there's a meeting here like we had last weekend, having offices here, it's just, exposure is great. Because most time, you're riding around in the car, and it's hard to really engage.
It's nice to change it up.
It is nice to change it up. It's fun stuff.
I thought I'd have to be like a veteran to attend a veteran breakfast. And nope, you know, they enjoy me being there.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Great.
Anything to add, Mark?
Yeah, I said before, a little tiny town would like to think we're unique, and we probably have to be unique. And the esprit de corps has to be part of what draws people. You guys are pulling that off. And, God, I think we really appreciate it. And if things are going well over there, we can direct our attention to other things, which is great. So, well done.
Well, yeah, well done indeed. And the community engagement is just amazing. It's so fun to see everybody, all the likes and everything on your Facebook page and what you've got going. It's, it's great. And you're an important part of the community, a very important part. And it's nice that, that you're engaged in out-meeting people. And it's, it's a win all the way around. Yeah, yeah, Team Plymouth indeed. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So do you guys have anything else for us? Y'all set? Okay.
Close and engage.
Thank you. Thanks for the updates.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
All right. So town meeting preparations, if anything. Do you have anything to share? I mean, I think you mailed no warrant today, didn't you?
Yay.
Yeah.
Yes. So they'll arrive tomorrow?
They should arrive tomorrow. They go to Carver. I can't speak for Carver. If you have a mailbox, you'll get it tomorrow.
Okay, great.
But it gets, it's Carver, and then Carver then distributes to.
Yeah, but it'll definitely be this week.
But it will be this. It should be there. If you don't get it by Wednesday. I do have a few here that I am bringing to town meeting.
Okay.
But if they need it. It also is online.
Okay.
So they can view it there.
Great.
But they have been shipped out and done, yes.
Beautiful.
Where is it online?
Bundled. I would have to look at that. And if it's not, Brian Bassett can get it up tomorrow.
Just because I know the checkout line in the supermarket, as soon as that goes out, that becomes the discussion of the day, the hour of the week.
I heard that there was a printing in the paper. So, but it should be smooth.
Great.
But it has gone out.
Okay. Thanks, Bree. All right, how about warrants paid?
$19,793.42. And that's been a couple of weeks of warrants, because it wasn't written out, so.
All right. So we don't have Liz with us. We don't have a town administrator update? Any correspondence?
Yes. Okay. I have, we have a couple requests for use of town property. The garden club for Saturday, May 18th, on the green.
Okay.
So if we could put that in, Fire Chief has already signed. Matt's here, so we could have Matt sign as well. Excuse me, Chief Ball.
Yep.
And Highway, I don't know if they usually do any, they put a barrel out, maybe that says pedestrians walking.
Okay.
But I can check with him on that.
Right, perfect.
Okay? Yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion.
But I'll ask if they'll do that for them.
Garden Club to use the town green, Saturday, May 18th. They'll be setting up at 7:00, and they should be wrapping things up at 1:00. And.
It's always a good one.
Yeah, it's always a good time. A lot of.
Tell my ex a couple years ago.
Interesting plants that they have up, too. So a lot of good stuff. And they've got a Facebook page now, too, that they've promoted this with. So good stuff. All right. So got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that can go to Matt. And I can give you a pen, Mary. I'll put the other.
And then we have Pease has another.
Okay.
Oh, that sounds sweet. We're going to skip this, because I believe you already did this.
What's it for?
It's some Bell Town gazebo done. This was for opening day. It must have never, did you ever?
Okay.
We can just.
Passed.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to just sign it?
Sure.
Okay. Just so I have it. And she did the right thing. I know I wasn't here for one. I don't think the folder was taking you guys to the quick meeting.
All right. I think that just needs the one.
Yep.
That's good.
This is from EverSource, for some work that they're going to be doing. This is from Eversource, for some work that they're gonna be doing.
Okay.
So. Thank you for finding that.
Do we need a motion made?
I don't think so. I don't, it's-
Just no, that's not-
No.
I highlighted what was-
It says, "Delivering safe and reliable energy is a top priority. They're working closely with town officials, and will continue to do so through all phases of work." Looks like this is at Five Palmet Road, which is here. So they're doing some work here at the building. Or is this addressed to us? No, service address is here.
I don't know why they do that.
All right, so it says, "This project will include excavation activities, traffic impacts, and temporary interruptions to your natural gas service." And, "Construction takes place between 7:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m." It doesn't really give any specifics. I'm not sure if this has to do with the project out back, possibly? Recreation project?
Uh, for gas?
Maybe?
It's gas, though.
Yeah, I don't know.
Someone's gas.
Okay.
But I think we should go ahead, I guess.
Okay, all right, so there's your-
Just acknowledge it. That's what I usually-
All right.
I'm good with that. We have another use of town property. Siobhan Green to use the old townhouse for a meditation.
Okay.
I know a lot of people-
This is a spec, because they use it every Tuesday night.
This is something different. I think she does an all-day, sort of, retreat.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize Siobhan Green to use the old townhouse on June 9th for mediate, meditation, meditation, not mediation, activity from 8:00 until 4:00. Looks like they're not expecting a whole lot of vehicles, only seven, so it should be a nice little group. And it's the Plimpton Mediation Group. So a motion to authorize them.
Meditation.
Did I say mediation again?
I do that all the time.
All right, did anybody want a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oh my gosh.
Doug Reese wrote a letter to us about doing some of the work that he did at the old townhouse.
All right.
He did some tree work.
So he volunteered to take down two Peggy Cypress bushes located on either side of the townhouse, the old townhouse. He planted them several years ago, but because they haven't been maintained, they've gotten too large and appear that they have damaged the face of the building. He spoke to Rob Farlot, from the Highway Superintendent, who said he would gladly chip the bushes. He also wanted to trim the two Japanese mountain and Andromina, also two bushes on either side of the front door. So I believe we told him that it was okay for him to go ahead and maintain these shrubs. Okay.
I saw him after it.
Okay.
He did a nice job.
Yeah, I thought so, too. I was gonna go by, gave him a count.
Well, thank you, Doug, very much for doing that.
And then, this is regarding Jason Frazier's-
Oh, yeah, this was great news.
Nice, lovely news.
All right, so we got a letter from the governor, Laura Healy, saying that she was pleased to reappoint Jason Frazier as a member of the Advisory Commission of Local Government pursuant to enter the Alcet of Resecion 62. Before commencing her responsibilities, she must take an oath of office. The appointment will be void unless the oath is taken within three months of the date of this letter, consistent with the statute. Your term will expire on January 15th, 2025. Lieutenant Governor Driscoll and I appreciate your willingness to serve the Commonwealth in this capacity. Congratulations on your appointment. So, well done, Jason. It's nice to have representation at such a high level. He does such an amazing job.
We're lucky to have him.
Oh, we're so lucky to have him.
Okay.
Is that it?
That is.
We're good.
Okay, all right, so that's a bit of correspondence. So we had minutes from 4/22. Did everybody get a chance to read those?
I believe I did.
Yes.
Did you? Okay, all right. I think that, they looked good.
I didn't write them.
Who wrote them? Mark, you wrote them for 4/22.
Oh.
Or was it Liz? Liz might have done them.
Oh, the 4/22, the last meeting, that was Liz.
Yeah, Liz did those.
And I really appreciate, she's not here to say it once again, but I really appreciate, that was a complicated thing to take the minutes on, and she did it really skillfully and masterfully.
Okay, so-
No surprise.
Yeah, no surprise. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from 4/22 as written.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right.
John, you want to take it?
No.
Before we go into executive session, how about some raves?
Well, I have a rave for the people who turned out for the meeting on Saturday on the fire station feasibility project. There were 35 people, and I thought it was well done.
It was a very good presentation.
That's my riff. And Mr. Will Hudson, because he's been shepherding this whole-
He knows this inside and out.
Yeah.
I do. I think it's the first time I've heard the term Team Plimpton. I love it. And it's a catchphrase. And it sort of brings forth my rave, particularly this time of year, town elections coming, town meeting coming up, the whole project that's been going on here to try to professionalize town services and town offices. And I think that's something this board has been prioritizing and working hard on for the last few years. And it clearly is one of our clearer successes. And really appreciate for everyone that works on that, and the degree to which we're actually exceeding, succeeding on that.
Yeah, I like that team factor, too. Be fun to do something with that. We have shirts made up, blue for you, red for the fire.
You let me know, listen to us.
That would be very cool. My rave is for the great work being done by the Police Department. And it's, it's just wonderful to see the teamwork. No, I'm not trying to be wise about it, but it is. You've put together a great team over there. Everybody seems focused. You're firing on all cylinders, getting the job done, and it's really appreciated. So thank you so much for your hard work. And then, our part, you know, thank you to Plymouth County for subsidizing us on important programs that we wouldn't be able to afford otherwise. So it's been a great partnership with them, and how much we appreciate what they're doing for us, and what, unfortunately, Liz isn't here to hear it, but she does an amazing job writing these grants and working with them to get as much money for the town. And she works with the chiefs, and all the other departments, to try to put together a comprehensive list of needs that can be met through that fund. So, well done to, well done to the team. All right, so that's all we've got in open session at this time. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna go into a brief executive session, and then we will return to open session to announce some votes, if any are taken during executive session. So I'll make a motion that we adjourn, I'm sorry, that we go into executive session for the purpose of number two, and that's to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And specifically, this will be contracts, negotiations on a police sergeant's contract and executive info coordinator. So we've got a motion to go into executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Aye.
Mrs. Joy, yes, and Mr. Russo?
Yes.
All right.
I would like to have everyone remember Memorial Day.
Okay.
So the parade will start off at 10:00. We've got some of the chiefs-
Do we have a meeting before then?
We might have one meeting.
Okay.
I have to look. We'll have-
Okay.
Yeah, we will, because we're gonna have to do after the-
Okay.
You know.
Okay, after the election.
Election and everything. So, but just a reminder, I'm still looking for cars, antique cars, tractors.
Okay.
So one of the officers, I don't know if you saw that email, Chief?
Yep.
That Caitlin's gonna have her horse lead the parade this year.
Oh, nice.
So it's really nice, very exciting.
Very exciting.
She was on the equestrian police unit before she came over here, so-
Really?
Very well-connected, even in town, too, with like a lot of equestrian horse facilities. So she's, we're gonna have a Plimpton horse on the parade.
Yeah.
Very nice, very nice.
On her own, went out and outfitted the horse, and some badges on her own, did some really cool things.
Wasn't that nice?
Yeah, I was really excited. Thank you.
That will be very cool.
What's her last name?
Malaney.
I noticed that she wasn't on the website.
Yeah, she's been busy working on the school resource officer duties and over at the Gannett.
Yeah, we're kind of changing the guard, so to speak, and moving people around. She's actually, which we're also excited for, is that we already know our school resource office team's set in place for next year. She's gonna be one of them. So a lot of parents reach out to me. They love having her down there. Same thing with Robert Orr.
Great.
So that team's already set in place, so we're excited to leave a program on that as well. So.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very nice. Okay, so we've got a motion to go into executive session and the vote, so-
Do we need Chris to stay?
I don't know. How long are we gonna be in executive session? Not too long?
I believe so.
We shouldn't be.
All right.
I think we have to announce the vote.
Couldn't you stay for like five minutes? Chris, could you stay for like five minutes? We're just gonna have a brief executive session.
All right, just trying to record you.
Great.
And then, then we'll come back, and then we need to announce some votes.